And I call this regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council meeting to order unless there's an objection. Seeing no objection, the meeting is called to order. Councilman Hennigan, can you lead us in the invocation and pledge?
Please rise if you're able.
At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values. Give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us. And above all, keep us charitable as we deliver it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief, are you? And I believe you are up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We just finished last week with another graduation of our Citizens Police Academy. Officer Hernandez has done a fantastic job. We've been doing two a year. And not only did she graduate, so our newest Citizens Police Academy graduates, but she actually recruited three to volunteer with us. So I just got the volunteer applications in, one for bailiff and two for citizens on patrol. So she's definitely doing twofold, and she's doing a great job in conveying what we do on a day-to-day basis. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Officer Hernandez, so she can explain a little bit further.
I'll put that down. Good evening, City Council and Mayor. How was everyone this evening? So just as we've done earlier this year, we did have our second Citizens Police Academy. This year, we actually had seventeen people graduate. Due to the change of the meeting, there's only about eleven that showed up tonight, but we had a graduation prior, so they could all celebrate. It is a thirteen-week class. We did change it to thirteen last time, and we added patrol to the schedule. So we do have one night they go to check on, they have a SWAT night, they have patrol night, like I said. We have the last class, which is our traffic stop scenario class. We have a night they use a simulator, and everyone did such a great job. This class in particular was very, very interactive. It was a great question class, but not questions that went all the way in left field. So it was such an amazing class. Anyone in City Council or anyone behind me has not taken this class, please look out. I'll be doing another schedule probably in the next month or so. It'll have another one in the spring. If I can call up my class, please?
What you experienced this year in class?
Good evening to everybody. I had learned about this class actually through the Facebook advertisement. And for me personally, I was inspired to take it because I work at Shepherd Center. And where we work with catastrophic care, we see a lot of police officers on duty from all over the state and elsewhere. And so I wanted to learn more about what is it that they do within the police force? And what do they do here within our community? And I have a new respect for what you all do for our community and keeping us safe. Thank you all so much for your service. And even as the daughter of a U.S. retired Air Force veteran, I was very proud to be a part of this class, be a part with everybody else. And I'm excited to serve on the Citizens on Patrol with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for participating, and thank you for those that signed up to volunteer. But we're thrilled that so many of you participated in the class. Next up is public comment. Joe Hirsch approached the microphone, and you'll have three minutes, sir. In fact, Joe, wait until it clears out a little bit. I'll tell you when to start, if that's okay.
Give the room a second.
She brought flowers. All right, go ahead.
Hey, good evening. I'm Joe Hirsch. I have a few topics to cover this evening. First, the two charter amendments on the agenda. Wow, changes to our charter is something quite significant, yet there are no public hearings for the changes, which is kind of bizarre. So my first question I would like you to answer is, why? What precipitated the need for these proposed changes? The corresponding memos created by our city manager failed to explain anything about what's really happening. So who on the city council is wanting to work for another city? Just be transparent about this. Explain to the residents the truth. There's no harm in being honest about this. Additionally, on the other proposed charter amendment, it's quite frightening and not so innocuous as you may think. As the new charter language is written, it would allow someone to give perhaps $10,000 to the mayor if the mayor's child has pink eye. Yep, that sounds crazy, sure, but there is no definition provided by Dunwoody explaining what a serious health condition is. Whereas the U.S. Department of Labor says a serious health condition can be anything that prevents a person from doing their job, or even if their child has to miss a day of school. So the city has proposed allowing members of the public to give an unlimited amount of money to any city employee if there's a serious health condition in the family, and it would be perfectly legal. And would that city employee have to report the money? And would the public be made aware of the bribe? I mean gift, not a bribe. I think this charter change is opening up an avenue for horrific abuses. And finally, I'm guessing that in executive session tonight, you will be discussing my demand letter related to my lawsuit against the city for its open records failures. I hope you will consider each of the fourteen demands as a true way of helping Dunwoody be a better city, more transparent and accountable. My lawsuit is important, and then it forces you to recognize all the systemic problems in our city related to the improper handling of records. For instance, there currently is no way to know what physical papers any employee has on their desk. There's no proper backups for records on employees' cell phones. There currently is no open records training for residents who sit on boards and commissions in Dunwoody. There currently is no avenue for someone to make a formal complaint about missing documents that were requested. However, with my demand letter, I have painstakingly researched and evaluated the challenges that need to be implemented in our city. And you have the opportunity to make our city a beacon for other cities in our state and be known as a city that understands that transparency fosters trust and democracy. I respectfully urge you to do the right thing so that not just my case can be resolved, but future problems can be avoided as well. Thank you.
Thank you. James Glass. Approach the microphone, and when you start, you'll have three minutes, sir.
Ready. Madam Mayor, council members, I'm speaking on behalf of the Charter Amendment, item 11 on your agenda tonight. And I am also the treasurer of the Dunwoody Police Foundation. The Dunwoody Police Foundation is a certified law enforcement foundation by the state of Georgia. Roughly eighty-five percent of our funding comes in the way of tax credits by donors. The importance of this is that we provide assistance in the way of financial assistance to officers who have been injured in the line of duty, of which we have one at this point. And the way the charter is written, we're unable to help that officer with their bills and the reduction in their pay from being on rehabilitation. So it's really critical. And let me also say that certified public foundations within the state of Georgia, there's roughly thirty of us. They all support their local police department. Atlanta Police Foundation is the largest. They all provide assistance to their officers who have been injured or who have other personal needs. So the Charter Amendment is critical to us being able to fulfill our mission. I strongly urge you to consider this and the support it gives our police officers knowing that the foundation is here for them should they need us. We have gone in and certainly purchased equipment for you. We purchased the K-9s for you, and I think it's critical that our officers know they've got this foundation to assist them should anything happen to them in the line of duty. And certainly, we use your HR department as well as this chief to determine how much should be granted to an officer who sustains an injury. So I strongly urge you to approve the Charter Amendment.
Thank you. That concludes the cards I have for public comment. There'll be another public comment section at the end of the meeting. Next up, Mr. Linton, your monthly report, please.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. This is the report that goes through last Friday, November eighth. And the Parks Department, we have the Waterford Park Playground is scheduled to be completed by the end of November. Two bridges shade structure, the poles have been installed now. As you know, that's a two-step process, the poles, and then the shade structures are then fabricated based on the dimensions that fit the poles. So those will be done first quarter of 2025 for the fabric, so in time for next season. Also, we have December first, the Holiday Lights opening night. The display will be open from five to 10:00 p.m. through December 31st. I'm going to draw your attention to the actual report. There's some pictures in there showing the Brook Run Concrete Serpent and Gecko sculptures that will be painted by an artist this week. So take a look at those and look at the renderings for more public art. The Trunk or Treat saw approximately 2,400 guests on October 24th, so big success in the parks there. Public Works, we completed our 2024 public paving program with 12.8 miles on 21 streets. Also, we completed the median widening pedestrian improvements on Ashford Dunwoody and Hammond Drive. The Ashford Dunwoody Phase One cycle track and sidewalk are substantially complete. Please enjoy that when you can and take a look at that project. Perimeter Center West pedestrian beacon and crosswalk installation and power connection is planned for this month. Gateway signage, the foundation has been installed for the sign at Shamwey Dunwoody Road and Cotillion Drive. We also have stormwater pipe rehabilitation, completing four pipeline and projects in Dunwoody North subdivision. We also evaluated ninety-eight pipes under roadways and for the scheduled 2025 paving, and identified ten of those ninety-eight pipes to be repaired. So just want to reiterate to the public that that is a program that we have that continues to look at the underground infrastructure to make sure everything's in good shape and does not fail unexpectedly. Hut Shack opened last week. I know we had a few council members that were able to attend the ribbon cutting there. That's at High Street. I encourage all citizens to visit that when you can. It is a unique facility. And High Street is a brand-new shopping and entertainment area of the city, so please visit that when you can. Communications, we transitioned the Dunwoody Ambassadors Volunteer Program to the Dunwoody Volunteers in Public Service with a new logo for that source. We also created a tenant resource page, and that page link is in your document here. This is for frequent code violations. Page is also another page on our city website for code enforcement. Those are things that we try to put into the website to make it more friendly for residents to contact the city. The police on October 2nd and 9th, the police department participated in the National School Wednesdays with Austin and Vanderlin Elementary Schools. We also have our, we conducted on October the 10th, our civilian response to active shooter class for management staff at the Ravinia One and Two. We had thirty-two staff members attend that training. Within the police report, you'll see the crime stats comparison report for 2023, 2024 crime stats. Through September of this year, there's a link in there for you and the public to take a look at as well. Under Finance, we've updated our ARPA and our ARP and CARES Act website to have all activity through the end of September is on there. We also had our Audit Committee meeting today. This was the final Audit Committee of the year. Here again, that's a group of volunteers, just so the public knows. They were appointed by the council to be on our internal audit committee. And overall audits, they do a great job. They ask many questions, and they look for different items to research each month. They work in conjunction with our internal auditor, which is an outside source firm that looks at things independently. Finance staff continues to work with community development and information technology to implement the central square permitting software. So that's still underway. And then the final thing I'll note is that the city has filled two police officer and one technology support specialist within the past month. So the officer count, I think it's down to two or three vacancies at this point. And so that is, things are looking up there within the law enforcement field. I'm glad to answer any questions, and the majority of the city staff is here as well to answer those questions.
Anybody? John?
Thank you, Eric. On page five of your report, there's an item that shows, it says Cherry Hill Path. Design completed and temporary construction easement acquired, coordinating with utilities and preparing construction documents. At one point, we had residents that live in that community were pretty upset or against much of the plans. I'd like to know if those plans are on the website, and if we've been talking to them. I want to make sure those residents are aware of what's being planned and know that the design is completed, is on the website.
Sure. Michael, you want to come up and address that? I know that's been your project.
Yes, I'm not sure if it's on the website, but we can get it up there. I know back when we got the grant, Richard McLeod and Community Development reached out to those property owners that live immediately next to it. I think the one on Cherry Hill is now owned by a builder. The original resident's not living there, and then they talked to the people to the south, and I'm not aware of any issues.
All right, I'm just interested to see the plans. Now that construction design is completed, I'd like to make sure that's well shared.
Yes, and we'll get it up on the website, and that also will be coming to council for approval of the construction contract when that's ready too, so.
All right, thank you.
We'll get that done.
Joe, go ahead.
Thanks, Eric. Sorry, let me see my notes here. We've had some good successes of Public Works completion projects of late. Are we intending to do some ribbon cutting and celebrations with any of these that we've done and completed in the last few months?
That's at the pleasure of the council. If y'all, you know, we have some of them we have set up. If the council would like to have additional ribbon cuttings, we're glad to do it.
Okay, all right. It might be, or pleasure of the district council reps potentially even. Okay, thank you. I will defer that.
You'll walk.
Yeah, well, I've got some thoughts. I did a quick just tactical, a C-click fix last night. I noticed that at Ashford Dunwoody and Perimeter Center East and West, the four lights are all out, the streetlights. And I noticed that when pedestrians are hard to see, because that's a high pedestrian area. The C-click fix ticket was issued originally a couple of weeks ago at the end of October, but it's still open. So as of last night, that's a really highly trafficked, both motor vehicle and pedestrian intersection. I was going there to Lazy Dog to enjoy their complimentary dinner for veterans last night. So yeah, so it was dark up there. Appreciate it.
We'll get that fixed. We'll get the Georgia Power to get those.
It said that C-click fix note said that Georgia Power said that they were not responsible for those lights instead of the city's responsibility.
We'll get to the bottom of it.
Yeah, thanks. I know that, this was an independent note, regardless of my counterpart here, but I am excited about the Cherry Hill connectivity as a person who does get around the city without using a car sometimes when I ride my bike. I appreciate that. I walk, I go through that way, because I don't want to ride on Tilly Mill. Say, if I want to get to Brook Run from the Waterworks, and I am on, I guess it's called Tilly Mill there, it changes its name, but I will go off Cherry Lane or Cherry Hill, whatever, and I will get off my bike and I'll walk those, you know, fifty feet, and then I can continue moving on back to that neighborhood road. So I think that just makes it safer, and I go back through Dunwoody North, and I'm all of a sudden on North Peachtree, and it opens up that way. So I'm looking forward to having that completed for that connectivity. We had Jeff Ferry rezoning, the signage for public information. So I know that this is like, we've got a lot of people that are very intimately involved, and the citizens want to be involved and make sure they're involved with that rezoning. And they say so on the sign that was posted on Jeff Ferry when the public hearing is. And the nuance is trying to let folks know that a public hearing is a legal process, but yet the public can still attend and speak at other meetings, right? So I don't know if this is just a lesson learned because they wanted to see that the date was changed now to the, you know, there's a public hearing during the planning commission, right? And that was on the, that date was on the side. And then the date is changed now to the next public hearing, which is when council gets it, right? But then, so I have neighbors in my HOA saying, well, wait a minute. There's a planning commission meeting, a second one, because they deferred in between that, and they want to attend that. And I said, well, they sure can. So I'm just leaving this up for comment, for feedback of how we can, is there something additionally that we could do when we do that deferral? Do we need to tweak the sign that's out there to say there's another planning commission meeting, even though it's not a public hearing? Do you have any thoughts on that, Eric?
There's some thoughts that we can share on that. We can certainly, I'll get with staff on that as well. There are several solutions. I'll be glad to go over with you on that, but yes, we can certainly look at that. I know what you're talking about. This has always been an issue in planning and zoning when things are deferred. It does change the timetable, but I have some suggestions on that.
Yeah, yeah, thanks. And this is, again, I want to talk about the apartment inspections, because I was out in the community the last few months as well as an at-large citizen. Can we, what's the frequency? How many, do we have a report that we produce that shows here's the number of multifamily homes, multifamily complexes in the city? And then this is the frequency in the cycle of when we do the inspections? Is that available? Do we happen to know? How long does it take for, to get re-inspected? Is it three years? Is it five years? How often is it that we inspect these multifamily properties? And what is that cycle? It'd be great if we could just kind of be up to that and know in the future. Okay, thanks. And I just have like two more things. In the police report, there was a report about a bicyclist hit on North Schallifer that spoke Creole and chief or whomever. Obviously, we don't have on-staff folks here, but it said that it seemed to allude that we didn't get a clear resolution from that person, because there was a language barrier. Is that, was that the end of it, or?
I'll have to look into that, sir.
All right.
And we have language line that we can use, and our new prepared 911 will actually translate that for us. I'll have to look into that specific situation.
Okay, thanks. And last one for the parks. We, and you're going to be up here later, but still, the vendor at the skate park, we signed a new contract with the vendor that was going to open up and stuff. I'm not a regular over there. Are they engaged in operating over there at the moment? And are they selling coffee or anything else for folks? Remember the vendors that we?
Yeah, Action and Adventure. Yeah, so they did really well with their summer camps this year. He does a lot. We get calls all the time about birthday parties and just kind of on like one-on-one lessons, things like that. My understanding is they're doing fairly well. I don't know about the coffee, but they are, as far as programming, yes, they're running pretty strong.
So just, could we, like, I'm always a dreamer. Could we ask for them to potentially offer things for, you know, beverages, coffee, snacks or something, and then we could evangelize that through social media for that? Thanks. All right, that's it. Thank you, Eric.
Hey, Chief, you're here. I want to talk a little bit about, wait, I have it open. About crime. So I see a drop in the number of calls, a pretty significant drop in the number of calls, which I'm presuming somewhat significant to Walmart closing.
Yes, that was a heavy hitter.
And I was recently at a conference where I learned that not every department handles these things the same way. For example, one of our neighboring cities simply stopped responding unless it was a large theft, and I am not suggesting that. What I'm wondering, and I want you all to understand that preventing shoplifting is a multifaceted effort, and a growing national problem was up twenty percent across the country last year. But I'm wondering, as we enter the holiday season, if A, there are conversations going on between your department and the major retailers, and B, is there any way we can make sure that the retailers are doing best practices? For example, one of the challenges at Walmart was, is that there was no one working in the store. So they had gone to those automated, there was automated cash registers, and there was nobody on the floor. They stocked overnight, I believe, and they had security upstairs watching. So they would catch the, sometimes, sometimes. And they would, so they would, when they were upstairs, they would catch the people shoplifting, but they weren't doing anything to prevent it.
Yeah, most of the shoplifting, it was called skip scanning. So they would take a barcode off something cheaper, or they would just take the item, pretend they skip, pretend they scanned it. And that's why they lost so much revenue, because there wasn't anybody there. And if loss prevention was not working, obviously, if they weren't monitoring, you know, all of those stations, then you had stuff just walked right out the door. So back to your first question, ma'am. My predecessor, you know, when we were starting this department, it was about customer service. And I'm not about not responding to, you know, that's the needs of the citizens. This may be their only one and only encounter, and it's going to be a positive one in Dunwoody. And it's important. And now that our staffing is getting back up, we only have three openings with enough in background now to hopefully get us fully staffed. Our ambassadors have been doing a phenomenal job in taking a lot of those non-critical incidents off the plate of the officers that are out there, so they can be more proactive in getting the crime.
So when you go to your conferences and stuff, are they talking about shoplifting, some petty crime, or not really?
They're mostly talking about violent crime.
Okay, which I can understand. To be clear, I can understand. And I talked to some D.CAB judges, and they told me that, and in fact, one of our Dunwoody judges happened to, right when our Walmart announced the closing, they sent it someone to a year in jail for stealing multiple TVs from Walmart, which I don't totally understand how that was possible, but, right. And then, and she said to him, you're the reason my Walmart is closing. It's not a victimless crime. But she and the other judges I talked to made the point is they have to get the violent crime on the docket, you know, before some of this other stuff, because it's critically important. But I know that some years you have a partnership with the National Retail Association.
GROG, Georgia Retail Organized Crime, and our investigators, we normally, I will double-check. We normally conduct a two-day operation during the holiday seasons, and we have a very, very good turnout. And, you know, and that's when we get all of our major stores, you know, our anchor stores at the malls, even the smaller ones inside. And when we do speak with them, we encourage them, like, you know, we need to partnership here because we want to, you know, eliminate that crime and make them know that when they come back here, that they will be prosecuted. And for the most part, we got a great partnership with our retail.
And also, Eric, we prosecute, right? I think there's a perception that when people get arrested- That when people get arrested for shoplifting in Dunwoody, if it's a miss if it's a felony, it goes to DeKalb County and a felony is over a thousand dollars, right? Or a thousand. But if it's a misdemeanor, they come here to court.
That is correct. And I did have a conversation earlier today with a solicitor. And he was just I said, tell me exactly, walk me through the process if there is a shoplifting crime in the city. And he goes through that very uh, seriously. And they look at that. We do. We prosecute them here. Uh, we prefer to prosecute them here in city court because we have a little bit more control over it than if it goes into the larger county system. So yes, to answer your question, the answer is absolutely. We do prosecute those to the fullest extent.
Okay, thank you.
And they are not released on a citation. They go to jail.
Right. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, Rachel.
Okay, so we're continuing on our nonprofit partner presentations this year. The Parks and Recreation Department is proud to call Dunwoody Community Garden Orchard a partner. Dunwoody Community Garden and Orchard provides an opportunity for members to grow food organically year round. Educates and mentors others in the community about sustainable growing practices. And dedicates a portion of its space for growing food for charitable purposes. Their core tenets include using organic growing methods, modeling environmental stewardship, being simple and scalable, enabling access for all. And fostering a learning environment. And here to present is Vice Chair Anne Bone.
Thank you for this opportunity and I I actually got a promotion. I'm now the chairperson. Um, and I. I don't know if I could get congratulations and I've brought with me um, Richard Osterholz, who's also a board member. A very important board member because he oversees all of the activity at the greenhouse complex in Brook Run Park. But I appreciate this opportunity to just let you know how we're doing and what we're doing at the garden. As Rachel mentioned, uh, we are a registered five oh one C three. We began the garden in two thousand and nine. We are celebrating our fifteenth year and she pretty eloquently covered what our mission statement is, which is to. Have a safe place to grow food organically, to teach people about it, to mentor people about it and to dedicate a portion of our garden to growing food for charitable purposes. So this is our fifteenth year. We currently have about a hundred members. We are at capacity. And have a waitlist of about oh, ten or twelve people who wish to join the garden. And we have. Increased our year over year production as far as our donations to our charity, which is Malachi Storehouse at St. Patrick's Church. The year in review. We have a dedicated team of we call them pantry bed farmers and a harvest team. That utilize about thirty five raised beds to deliver this last year over twenty three hundred pounds of organic fresh vegetables. So. That's a lot of lettuce and broccoli. And some sweet potatoes. Hopefully we'll get those this week. To Malachi Storehouse. Over the year, we also produce or present. Eleven Master Gardener Talks, which are open to members of the public. We hold those in the barn at Brook Run Park and usually the barn is standing room only for these presentations. Not just our garden members, but a lot of people from the public come. Um, it seems to be very well received. We were a main um, host site in Dunwoody for the twenty twenty four MLK Junior Day of Service. We had over sixty. Volunteers designated to work in the garden and their work was very much appreciated. And in conjunction with the Parks and Recreation Department, we hosted our third annual Snapdragon's Garden, which. We call it Snapdragon Garden because it's a great photo opportunity in the spring. For families to come and start enjoying the flowers come out and children's activities in the garden. This past year, from the photo, you can see we had a special guest from Dino Woody, who is a big hit. Um, our plant sale in spring. This is our largest fundraiser. This past year, we tallied. Eight hundred individual purchases from different members of the public. So we think this is a good draw. From Dunwoody and beyond. We have a lot of repeat customers. They they really anticipate it. We provide guidance to other garden clubs um, if requested as far as. Plant selection. Sometimes we germinate and provide the plants. This past year it was to the Dunwoody Women's Club for their Sun Woody Project. And very importantly, we have funded and installed several upgrades to the greenhouses um, in in the Brook Run Park such as. Irrigation upgrades with new PVC low voltage and low voltage timers. Um, a lot of supplemental grow lighting to compensate for. The increasing opacity of the skin of the greenhouses. We reconstructed several grow beds inside the greenhouse complex. And reconstructed two of the ADA raised beds outside of the the greenhouse. We were able to implement a new point of sale system at our points at our plant sale made everybody much happier, much quicker. And thanks to funding from Parks and Recreation, we were able to greatly improve security. At the actual garden, the main garden by installing self closing. Push button combination lock gates and our members are. Very, very happy with those. We just get nothing but compliments. We also upgraded all of the main garden hoses to steel hoses. They seem to be a little bit better with the mowing crew. Um, and the gardener abuse. We've got a lot of positive impact, I believe, in our community. We have a great relationship with the. City of Dunwoody and I'm really honored to be here to just share this information with you. The city of Dunwoody and Parks and provides access and maintenance to the greenhouse complex. Assist with the greenhouse, the ventilation, the utilities, the concrete work. All the chairs and tables at our social events and increased security at the main garden. We do continue to have strong governance. We have a dedicated nine member board. Um, and publish bylaws. All of this is on our website, d c g o dot org. And the garden also serves as a work site for two DeKalb County Extension Service Master Gardener Groups. One being the Organic Orchard and the Pollinator Beds and the other one being the Demonstration Garden. Which is demonstrating methods for small space gardening. We lost a couple of key people this last year and donations in memory of a founding member Rod Pittman. He's much beloved in Dunwoody, provided the funding for a brand new gazebo. That we've just finished erecting um, at the greenhouse complex. It's beautiful. Richard spearheaded that team. It was. It was a labor of love and a lot of muscles. We were able to um, also receive some additional donations in memory of Mitch McGill, who's the. Late husband of the outgoing chairperson Cindy McGill and we'll be constructing a new shade shack or shade structure at the very back of the main garden. We were able to secure a fifteen hundred dollar grant from the Foodwell Alliance that funded the grow lighting that. Richard and his team installed in the greenhouse. And we have developed a mutually beneficial relationship with Foodwell Alliance. We are the site of a lot of corporate volunteer teams coming out to. Learn and of course, the reaction is always the same of we didn't know this was here. This is wonderful. We have an ongoing investment with a Georgic firm called Soil Three using their compost. We have really increased the quality of the soil. And and greatly improved the gardening experience of our members. We're in good financial shape, probably the best shape. Well, I know for a fact the best shape we've ever been in. Our primary fundraising source is our spring plant sale. This past year that brought in about fourteen thousand dollars. This is think about this as like four and five dollars a plant. Okay. We our membership dues bring in about ten thousand dollars and this past year we were able to receive. Six thousand dollars in donations, mostly in memory of the members that we that have passed away. We have a great support community. We call them Friends of the Garden. They get our emails and our newsletters and participate in a lot of our activities. I wanted to. Take a moment to just mention, oh. To go back to another very important positive aspect that somehow did not make my slide presentation. And that is that because we're one of the few community gardens in the state that has a greenhouse. Facility, we are the germination and transplant hub. For a lot of other community gardens. They bring us their seeds. They we start those seeds and we provide those transplants to them and that includes um, Garden Isaiah at Temple Emmanuel. The garden at Malachi's Storehouse, the Stone Mountain Community Garden. Uh, the Blackburn Community Garden, the Brookhaven Community Garden. They would suffer a lot if we didn't have that facility um, and the ability to uh, offer them that. So it's a lot of work. I will say that I was told recently by the. DeKalb Extension Service that to the best of their knowledge, the Dunwoody Community Garden is the largest all volunteer community garden in the state. So that's something that Dunwoody can be very proud of. Our negative impact factors to to just sum up. We're always having security issues, you know. Those muscadines look really good and the figs look really good and the tomatoes look really good. So there are theft issues in the garden, but we're optimistic that the new gates will help with that a lot. Um, we continue to experience some issues with the aging greenhouse structure. The quality of light coming in is just is very poor at this point because the structure is polycarbonate and it's. It's scarred and. Pitted and. Just roughed up a lot. It's not easy to see through anymore. So we are compensating with that uh, with grow lighting. Um, and then we experienced the same challenges that all other community gardens um, experience, which is. Mother Nature, pests and plant diseases, and then a lot of people trying a lot of different garden techniques in a very small area. So um. Our plans for twenty twenty five include the new shade structure I mentioned in the back of the main garden. Um, we have completed the construction of a new picket fence separating the main garden and the organic. Um, orchard and pollinator beds. And to further our mission of educating the community, we are currently debating um, and considering an idea of trying to use some of our. Uh, windfall proceeds to offer mini grants to Dunwoody teachers. Who might want to purchase. Supplies or put together projects about botany or ecology or sustainability. Um, in their classrooms. So with that, are there any questions for me or for Richard?
I don't see any, but want to thank you for bringing so much. Oh, sorry, John.
I'll jump in. Thank you for your presentation.
Sure.
Um, you're an important organization. As you say, that greenhouse is an important structure and it sounds like it serves not only our community, but far and wide. Sounds like it needs some work.
It's probably. How old is it, Richard? We think it's over fifty years old. It's gone way past its typical life expectancy.
Yeah.
And it does have a lot of holes in it and um, you know.
Sounds like it's helping grow a bunch of food too for.
It it is. Now, we cannot use it in the summer because it is too hot. I had a. Certified Horticulturalist come in who builds greenhouses all over the world and essentially it's a wonderful greenhouse, but it really wasn't the. Correct design for our climate. It's meant for a much more uh, cooler climate.
Right.
Because we can't open anything in the roof to let the hot air out.
It sounds like we're now you got a grant for the lighting for the grow lights, but now we're paying money to. Light those lights, right? So.
Actually, on that, we're coming out ahead.
Okay.
Because when we put the grow lights in, we uh, those are. Digital lights. LEDs each we added sixteen of those. Each one of those draws three amps. And by putting those in. Uh, we regularly cut out eight forty watt fluorescent bulbs. So we're coming out somewhat ahead on the energy.
Well, that sounds good. We're still paying something. I know in the past we've used ARPA funds for for charity aspects for food for the others. I'm not sure there's any. ARP of money available or if there's cleanup funds or whatever is available. Just an idea if it's. To improve that greenhouse, to improve the lighting, to improve the food quality for the many seedlings that come out of that just might be an idea. I also heard that you are the straight shade structures. Um, I guess there's shade structures being put in other areas of the city in the sense of the parks. Have we Rachel, I guess, is there any way to work together? To make it easier for this organization? Is there a cheaper way to assist them since we're already going with? You've already done it? Okay.
Matter of fact, Gabe Napes was very instrumental in helping us obtain a permit for that. And the uh, city has poured the concrete.
Awesome. So there you go. That's the partnerships that we like to hear about. And I also heard that you have county organizations that you're working with the county aspect. Is there any county funding of uh, helping those organizations work at our facility here in Dunwoody?
The Extension Service and uh. The DeKalb County Extension.
Okay.
Yeah, no, there's not any funding.
Which is actually a state agency.
Okay, again, I'm just trying to look at it. Different organizations that are.
It is through UGA.
Right.
All right. Well, thank you what you do.
Oh, it's a labor of love. We enjoy it.
Yes. Okay, go Stacy.
Just because it wasn't the report and I just don't know where it is. How is the orchard doing and and what all do you use that for? And is it producing anything? And and how how does the orchard work?
Oh, the. The orchard, the orchard is great. It was planted in two thousand and twelve with a a grant from um. Eighties and um, the trees for the most part are extremely healthy and producing. We've had to replace a few apple trees. We actually harvested um, a gosh. Couple hundred pounds of apples for Malachi's this year. We we also harvested a hundred and twenty five pounds of plums. And they were delicious. No, the plums, every once in a while, you know, we'll find a plum that's on the ground and it has just one little defect or something and we thought, oh, let's taste this. It was they're delicious. Um, the blueberries bear quite a bit of fruit and uh, we did lose the only. What's the fruit? I'm trying to think of this, the exotic one, the pomegranate. We lost a pomegranate, but we've replaced the bush. It just hasn't started bearing yet. And the pineapple guava. Yeah, the freeze over the last couple of years did a number on that. And organic orcharding is not easy. Because most orchards use a lot of chemicals. Um, but. I wish we got more pears, but we don't. And the orchard is a fun place when the kids come for Dino Woody or for for the uh, Snapdragon's Garden. I can't tell you the scout troops and the school groups that we've hosted over there to come and learn about where their food comes from. It is. It's a pleasant place to picnic and party. So it's doing well. Just thank you for uh, continuing. This is a big labor of love for y'all. It's.
Oh, you're welcome.
No small task for you and your board, but also you give our community another opportunity to meet each other and have a place to gather. So we appreciate that. Thank you for your service and. I don't buy plants anymore because my husband says it's murder, but um. But I do come and I look.
You do.
I do. I do, but I don't buy any.
So please come see us.
I will. And y'all are doing a great job. Thank you. And thank you for supporting the uh, food vulnerable in our community. All right, consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions? Move by Joe.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any further discussion? I just want to make one clarification for the public who's looking at the agenda. When it says the skate park mural surplus, that sounds like it's financial, but it isn't. It's about. The murals that we've commissioned through the years and finding a way to return them to the artists if they would like them, just to make sure. Seeing no further discussion, I call the question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That passes unanimously.
They are moving to the business items. The first item, item number ten is an ordinance to allow a drive through facility at lot parcel number eighteen, three, forty nine, zero, four.
I'm on the wrong one. And number nine.
Oh, sorry. Uh, tree top quest Dunway renewal agreement, Rachel Waldron.
So can there's need to be any language around it being tabled? Okay.
Uh, they've got to do a motion. Remove it from the. You need a motion to remove it from the it's tabled.
Wait, remove it from the table?
Move to remove the tree top quest renewal agreement from the table.
Second.
Uh, move by Stacy, second by Rob. Any discussion about removing it from the table? Move by Stacy, second by Rob. Any discussion about removing it from the table? Hearing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. So now it's removed from the table. Thank you for pointing that out.
Make sure. We're just, we're just continuing our discussions for the Treetop Renewal. I know there's been questions last few meetings. I believe I've, I've answered all those. I do have a representative from Treetop here with me tonight. In case there's anything further you'd like either of us to answer or address.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion moved by Councilwoman Harris, second by Councilwoman Lambert. Is there any questions? Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I'm interested in having Treetop Quest come to us and talk to us about their security of their equipment. Safety is my utmost concern. I read some emails in the sense that the vests or the equipment was left out and was used. Can I have them give me an overview of what they're doing for the safety of our children?
Sure.
Hi, everybody. My name is Linda Kelly and I am the Regional Manager. We operate three parks in the United States and one of them here is in Dunwoody. And first of all, we want to thank you for 10 years, almost 10 years that we've been in partnership with you. So to address your question about security, first of all, it was assumed that these harnesses were left out. That's not a fact. And we have very stringent protocols in terms of how we open and close our parks. And when this happened, of course, it brought all of our attention to, you know, the security matters and how we do operate it. And we did have a lot of meetings about that. And we did implement new security processes in terms of how we close, how we can't and how we count our harnesses and then redundant processes to make sure they're done again. We are installing cameras. We replaced all the locks. And the incident that happened, these youths had to climb a six-foot fence to get into the areas that we're speaking on. So it was no small feat for what happened. And so I really think this was an anomaly of what happened. And we do follow the Association for Challenge Course Technology. This is a governing institution that, body that puts together the safety protocols for our industry. And we've been without incident as far as we've operated in the United States. So I could go into detail and even bring you a detailed slideshow of what we do and how we do it. But more than that, if you have any questions, I invite you to come to the park and actually experience it and see what we do. And so you have an understanding, experiential experience of what we do.
Yeah, thank you for the update. I know you're working with Rachel and I appreciate all of the updates. I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that that's our utmost, you know, thing that we're interested in.
Yes, and ours too. Yes, especially when you're dealing with gravity. It's, it's definitely our, you know, our most important priority. It's the safety of our, of our staff as well as all of our guests.
Thank you.
So the incident in question, what you're saying is, is that the young teens, I think they were.
Yes.
Climbed a fence that was clearly closed. Okay.
Yes.
Just clarifying.
Yes.
All right. That we have a motion on the floors. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I call the question. All in favor of the renewal agreement signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That passes unanimously. Thank you for your time and your service to our community.
Appreciate it.
Just one moment there.
Just turn on heat.
It was smell. It's front of, right, we just turned on the heat, I think. It was cold.
Okay.
I mean, but it wasn't that cold. Okay, sorry.
The next item is an ordinance to allow a drive-through facility at lot parcel number 1834904001. In consideration of special land use permit case SLUP 24-01 for 140 perimeter center west Dunwoody, Georgia 30346 Allegra Denora.
Thanks. So this is the second read of this item, the special land use permit request for Starbucks. At the last meeting, there were no public comments. And so the thing that we've changed between then and now is that we've included the site plan showing the pedestrian connection. That's eliminating three parking spaces. And so I have that site plan shown right here. And you can see it's towards the bottom right of the image and that the pedestrian connection is going straight across. And those three parking spaces over here are gone now. And so just as a quick refresher, this is for the drive-through for Starbucks. The stacking spaces would be here. Everything's entirely to the rear of the building and it's infill development at 140 perimeter center west at that shopping center. The planning commission has recommended approval and staff is recommending approval as well. And staff is very supportive of converting surface parking into a more productive use. It'll result in a net removal of 80 existing parking spaces as well as bringing some more traffic over into that area. And the entire drive-through is to the rear of the building. There's adequate space for stacking. The applicant is here this evening and I'm of course available for any questions that you all might have. I have the rest of my presentation if anyone wants me to reference anything else.
All right, Catherine.
Hi, Allegra. There is no access on the street side, right? This is all interior to the, the facility? Okay, I'm just checking. Thanks.
It's a business item.
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Rob, second by Stacy. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That passes six to one. Councilman Seconder was the no. Thank you very much. And also I think this made it worse. It's cold air coming out. But may, but maybe I'm wrong. Right. It's cold air. It's cold air. Just want to point that out. I'm going to move to the side. Thank you. Okay. All right.
The next item is item number 11, an ordinance to amend Dunwoody, Georgia Charter, Article 2, Section 2.13 Prohibitions.
Okay. I, is it okay for me to start?
Yes, why don't you start, lady of the mayor?
These are two, in front of us are two charter changes. A charter is meant to be a living document. We are exceptional in that we have not changed ours in 15 years. And what has occurred is two situations that need, in my opinion, as mayor, immediate response, but this has not been immediate. There are state guidelines on how you change the charter. We discussed it a few la- last month. And then we advertised it for three weeks in the local paper. But also in the champion paper, which is the county paper. And then we have to have two reads, first read and second read. It's just, this is not a public hearing though, right? It's fine. Okay. So this one is prompted by the fact that somewhere along the way, no one noticed that our, we had set ourselves up, not we had set ourselves up. No one foresaw a police foundation, for example, but also quite frankly, GoFundMes. When this prohibited any gift above $100 to any employee. The definition of severe illness, Eric, comes from what? The def, it comes from somewhere. Yeah, the illness comes from.
Well, the, the, mayor, I have an explanation.
Okay.
But if, for the whole thing, but I'll, I don't want, if you want me to bifurcate and answer that question. We're using the same language that's used in the Family Medical Leave Act, the federal act. That's where that came from.
Right. And we want our police foundation to be able to do what other police foundations in Georgia can do. You heard the, just coincidentally, the woman from the Shepherd Center who just finished our Police Citizens Academy talking about how many officers she sees at the Shepherd Center. We want our, our police foundation to be able to support any officer in need or their family. And that is the main purpose of this change. I also critically need to clarify that every one of us, this doesn't apply to us. The state regulates gifts to elected officials. We have our own, the state has an ethics code. If someone were to give us $10,000, it would be violating the state's ethics code. We have our own limits for gifts and everything. And so it doesn't apply to us. It, it has nothing to, and I worry that people would get confused. And so we have, just wanted to clarify that. Mr. Attorney, do you have anything to add?
I'm going to be slightly winded, but I think it's very important to point out the legal things that you just said, that they're not backed, they're backed by law, not just us making those statements. So Madam Mayor and Council, the way this started, remember we're in the Charter Prohibitions. The Charter Prohibitions by definition apply to elected officials, appointed officials and employees. The, y'all's definition in your charter separates y'all from employees, notwithstanding state law. Although state law does apply, in your charter, the city council is defined as a city, elected city council members and the mayor. The mayor is defined. Y'all aren't employees because the employees are regulated by the city manager. Y'all set policies and you hire a city manager, but there's a specific prohibition, 3.05 says that y'all can't interfere with employees. So it's very clear that, and by the way, you've also got Section 103B9 Ethics that applies to y'all and everybody else. You have 2.07 that sets the city council and mayor's compensation. You have 2.01 that defines city council by definition. So it does not, this provision is not being written for this mayor or for this city council. But y'all are in it because if you start at the beginning of 2.03, it says, no elected official, appointed officer, employee of the city or any agency, blah, blah, blah. And it says what you can't do. The mayor's exactly right. It started out with the philanthropy of helping law enforcement as an agency, whether it be the gift of donation of workout equipment, whatever, or aiding a law enforcement officer who has some condition, whatnot. And I'll give you some others too. A canine unit officer where a animal group wants to help build a shelter for the canine dog is out of gratuity or not. All of this is doing in this section, and Councilman Price added it, asked the question last time, is making it not cart blank a no. It's up to the city's manager to set policies on how this is implemented. It's up to his, well, it's y'all's police chief that is appointed by the city manager to set the policies of how that is handled in his department. But I also want to point out, the reason why we say city personnel is we did not want to discriminate against a law enforcement officer that had a serious health condition that somebody did a GoFundMe page or their child had cancer and was at a Danny Thomas Center in Memphis getting free care. We think it ought to be applicable to personnel facing the same circumstances. But after y'all, if you take this action eventually, to fix this charter provision, it still doesn't mean it's a go. The city manager and HR people working with the police chief need to come up with appropriate policies and restrictions and whatever. I also want to make sure everybody knows, because it's important to me. Ethics still applies. You're not changing your ethics. You can't change state law ethics. You can't change the definition of a bribe that's a felony under state law. You're not changing the other provisions about anything else except for you're removing an automatic no that candidly we prob, nobody was aware of until we researched the Dunwoody Police Foundation attempting to provide support above the $100 limit. So that's where all this comes from, okay? It will still be regulated. It must be regulated. There'll have to be policies around it. I think Eric's prepared with HR to do that. You're just removing the automatic no, but you're not changing your ethics. You're not decriminalizing bribes. You're not doing any of that. So I think that's important. I may have talked too much, mayor, but I wanted to make sure we've vetted this. And we use the word city personnel and I think that's important. It's not some, this is not a mirage. Dunwoody has employees and they have contract employees that are called personnel. Y'all are not any one of those. Okay. So that's why the word personnel, it's an art form intended to wrap its head around the, those that are leased through other companies that work here as employees and people that are direct employees for y'all. That's why we use that term. If I can answer any questions, I'm glad to.
Does anybody have questions? Okay. All right. Thank you for that. Whenever you're ready. I think we, nobody had questions.
Item number 12 is an ordinance to amend Dunwoody, Georgia, Article 2, Section 2.13E Prohibitions.
Okay. So this change was necessitated because Councilwoman Harris, who is a highly sought-after sports management person, had opportunities with several local governments. And when she mentioned it to staff, they did some research and found this language in the charter. The language in the charter is fairly arbitrary because it doesn't, it doesn't include federal and state. It includes county and city. And it also limits people that might want to serve on the city council in future. And the, so this creates an opport, but, but also want to make another point, which I made before, which is, is that it's really hard to be an elected official and have a full-time job. And local governments understand better than anything else. Hopefully the state and maybe in the federal, maybe, but the state, local for sure, understands how you can balance that because they see it with their own elected officials. They cannot, we're not saying they can work in Dunwoody. We're not saying they can work in DeKalb, just in case there's a conflict. But this is a correction that we need, that we can make. It's, it's one that we caught when a councilperson did a, ask a question. So.
With that, I will recuse myself from any discussion.
Okay. All right, Eric or Ken, do you have anything to add? Right. You have to talk into my.
Yeah, you can't work for the city of Dunwoody and you can't work for DeKalb County. But again, you know, they, it, I, I want to say this. It doesn't stop the ethics rules from applying. It doesn't stop recusal rules when if and they ever come up. But these are the ones that we consider to be the most, you know, pretty cart block because of the nature of the relationship between us and DeKalb and inside, obviously, Dunwoody.
Right. And, and I think we've actually had employees that were serving in local government. We certainly have had personnel that were serving in local government back in the day. I don't know when. But, but yes. Okay. So does anybody have any questions, comments? All right. Thank you, Sharon, because it's, it's not action. I'm done. Did I not? Okay. Did Sharon not read it? Oh. Yeah, she read the titles. She read the titles. She read the titles. Okay. Michael Smith. Someone should tell Stacy to come back.
Hey, are you?
Okay.
I'll wait on Stacy.
Right. All right.
Okay. I'm here tonight to update council on the replacement of the Brookrun Maintenance Facility. and on discussed contracting with a construction manager at risk as the project moves forward toward construction. Previously, the city council allocated funding for this project from some of the proceeds of the North Shalifer sale. And last year approved a contract with LDD Blue Line to design the new facility. The, the need for the new facility, well, first of all, the new facility is planned on the site of the existing facility. That's shown here in the picture. The facility is outdated, does not meet current or future needs for the city's maintenance operations for parks, public works. Replacement of the, this facility was included in the most recently adopted Parks Master Plan. And there, there's already, the problems with the existing facility, we've already had an electrical fire out there that burned down part of the building. The, and that was the part where the offices were for the maintenance personnel. The heating system is original to the building, so it's over 50 years old. At some point, that's going to need to be completely replaced. And then the, the big, but the biggest issue with the facility other than the condition of it is the layout of it. The building sits right in the middle of the site, so it, it doesn't leave a lot of room for equipment and material storage and, you know, normal operations of a, of a maintenance facility. And just as a comparison, I have a picture here of Roswell and Alpharetta's Public Works Facilities, which happen to be right next to each other. And the main thing I wanted to point out here is how big their, their yard area is, where their equipment and storage is. If, in the Alpharetta picture, it's a little hard to see, but up at the top, that top row is materials. A lot of that's material storage. They have different bins for different types of materials. And so that's, that's the biggest thing that we hope to gain out of this project. Besides replacing the building is having a better yard area. Our current, I mean, this, this is an on-the-ground view of our current facility. The, these are the spaces on either side of the building. You can see it's, it's fairly narrow. And then once you start having personal vehicles parking in there because there's no other designated parking, it makes it, doesn't leave a lot of room for equipment to operate, loading, unloading, material storage. Also, you can kind of see here in the picture, the, the pavement, the pavement out there is probably near the end of its life at some point. Even if we weren't doing anything, that would have to be completely replaced. The, the wall on the north side of the site has a big crack in it. Part of it's failing. That's another issue with the project, with the current facility. There are some benefits to the current site. It's close to Peeler Road, corner of the park. That's not as heavily programmed, so there's a good in and out to the public roads there. It's kind of tucked away a little bit down the hill below the road, so it's not too visible. But, but there are also a lot of challenges with the site. There's about 20 feet of relief in the topography between Peeler Road down to a creek that borders the south side of the property. So there's a creek that runs along the south side. There's a buffer associated with that. Part of the existing facility is already in the city buffer. And so we, we have some site constraints. We, we worked with the design team and came up with a site plan. And the, what we're doing, the building is shaded in this picture. We've moved it as far north on the site as we can without going into the, much into the wooded area towards Peeler Road. This would be a two, we envisioned a two-story building kind of tucked into the hillside. The lower level where the warehouse and loading dock is would open up into a yard that's, that's larger and has more room to operate in. But, you know, this, because of the slope of the site and trying to fit within that existing area, it does require some retaining walls. The, uh, the kind of the black and white heavy bold lines in the picture show, there's a retaining wall on the north side of the site. Of course, the two-story building would have a retaining wall built into it. Then there's another one on the east side, and then one separating the upper and lower parking lots, which, you know, all those walls add to the cost of the project. And so the building floor plan is, that we came up with is about 15% less than the current facility, but it's laid out much better. There's, there's some wasted space in the existing building. There's a, as, as we envisioned it, there was an upper floor for offices for both park staff and maintenance contractor, maintenance supervisors. And then that lower level would be a tool room and loading docks and equipment and, and other types of storage. This is the rendering of that facility tucked into the hillside. You see the yard there. And then that upper parking is more parking for the employees. The, um, because of the complexity and challenges with the site and, and the costs that we were seeing associated with that, we decided that it would be best to bring in a construction manager early in the project while we're still doing the design to help try to guide the most efficient way to, to build the, to do, design the site and build the building and get real-time feedback on the cost instead of, in a traditional design bid-build. You design the whole project, you bid it out, and then you see what it really costs. I mean, you have estimates before that, but when you get the number you get from the contractor, that's the number. So we're, we've brought, we want to bring in a construction manager and a, what's commonly called a construction manager at risk, where they work with the design team during the design process, give us feedback on cost. And then at some point, when the design is fair enough for long, they give us what they call a guaranteed maximum price. And then the city has the option of, of taking or leaving that. And we'll talk about that more in a little bit, but that's, that's where we are. We've, we put out a request for proposals for a construction manager at risk. We, we have an owner's representative working with us, Vandemere Management. And at this point, Bert Vandemere is going to come up and talk about the process of putting out a request for proposal and getting, selecting a contractor as the construction manager at risk.
Good evening, counsel. I'm Bert Vandemere, as Michael mentioned. So we were, uh, my company was brought on by the city of Dunwoody this past summer. We've been working closely with Michael and your, your team over at Brookrun, as well as LDD Blue Line to help baseline the program over there and get a contractor on boarded so we could vet out the best program for the most economical cost. So in July, we put the RFP out. In August, we had a mandatory site visit. We had 14 general contractors throughout the state come and, and join. After we took a tour, we had seven general contractors propose. I want to clarify, when we talk about the CM at risk approach versus the design bid-build, the RFP was based around qualifications. You know, are they fit to do the job? The quality of the budget, you know, they were going off of a nap, basically a napkin sketch, which you guys saw, one, one sheet and a narrative from LDD Blue Line. And then a, a maximum overhead in profit and general conditions. So at the end of the day, that's what we were, you know, we put the RFP out for to evaluate. Once we got seven responses, we evaluated those and we shortlisted four general contractors and we met with them at the end of September, beginning of October. After interviewing four contractors, we quickly identified that the budget was higher than originally anticipated. So we challenged the shortlist of four to come up with some value engineering ideas, some, I won't say scope reductions, but I would say a more effective way to build your program at a cheaper cost. And with that feedback, we shortlisted down to two. And so when we got to two folks, ultimately both the same qualifications, we ultimately decided that the contractor that put the best foot forward on maximizing the budget and the schedule and had a lower overhead and profit cap on the final estimate should be recommended to this council. That group is called Moeller Purcell. They're actually relatively local. I think they're out of, uh, well, they're relatively local, which may be why they were more cost-effective. But fully qualified, as we said, and went through a rigorous process to ensure that we're putting the right recommend, recommendation in front of this council. So that's where we're at. The next steps would be with this approval, we would enter into a contract agreement with Moeller Purcell to solidify those terms. And then as Michael mentioned, we would continue that programming effort to fine-tune the budget and go into an exhibit to their contract, which would be the ultimate price for the new maintenance building. At that point, we would submit for a permit and begin construction. Any questions for me before I turn it back to Michael? Thank you.
So I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about costs. As Bert said, these are not bid numbers. These are cost estimates at this point because we're still not too deep into the, to the design. But they do give us kind of a benchmark for where we are. And we had a range from the seven, but we really had four that were within the three to four million dollar range. We, I broke it down by building site and then the general conditions and fee. The building numbers for the, for the, say, the lowest five were pretty close. The building costs were, were very close to each other. The biggest difference was in site. The, is, the, the four that we shortlisted were the four lowest shown on here. But there were really three that were, were grouped pretty closely together. And this, the, the lowest number here, their site number was a lot lower than every other one. And based on what we know about the site and the average that we saw from the other contractors, we felt like the, the real site cost is going to be closer to what the other six estimated it would be. So the, the budget where we stand right now, there, the estimated cost for design, construction, the contractors cost everything is 3.8 million. We've identified 2.9 million in capital funds that, that we have to get, to allocate to this project currently. I'll say something about the stormwater. Yeah, I mentioned earlier that we're right next to a creek. The current facility doesn't have any stormwater control, modern stormwater controls that, based on the age of the facility. And, oh, one thing I need to point out, so the number in the packet is a little bit different than the number I'm showing on the screen right now for the Georgetown Gateway Surplus. After the agenda went out, working with finance last week, we, we trued up that number. And so I think you're, you're seeing 1.3 million in that line item. We, we've realized it was probably going to be closer to 1 million surplus on that project. But, so we're, we've added money in here to do modern stormwater controls on the site. And right now, we're, we've got a gap of about 900,000. And that's what we, when we bring the construction manager at risk on, we will be working to bring that, bring that number down as much as we can while getting the facility that meets the long-term needs of the city. Bert mentioned next steps. So what, with the construction manager at risk, we sign a contract with the contractor, but we, at this point, we would only be obligated for what they call their pre-construction services, which would be working with the design team, doing estimating. They've given us a cost of $12,000 for that. And that's obviously well below the, the city council's threshold, but we want ultimately that contract, the next step would be to enter into a contract for the guaranteed maximum price once the design is closer to complete. That would come to the city council and at that point, the city would have, you know, be able to say, no, we're going to go in a different direction, or yes, we're willing, we're ready to accept the guaranteed maximum price. So we enter into a contract now, but there's another out point before you get to construction. So, um, at this point, we're recommending entering into a contract for pre-construction services with the construction manager at risk and fully anticipating that we would partner with them during construction, but we're not locked in at this point. And I'll answer any questions at this point.
I have a question. John, do you have a question? Joe, go ahead. Right. Rob's got something.
I, I may have the same question, which is, um, for the estimated gap, have we identified a source of funds or a, a switch of project priorities to, to cover that looking forward?
There's another 370,000 or so in the capital fund that I, I've identified as a possible source to, to go towards this. And of course, we're also wanting to try to work to bring that number down on the cost side too. But, um, as we, as we do that and get to a final number, we would come back with a, a recommendation to bridge any gap that we have at that point.
So just, this is all just kind of thinking in conjecture here. When, when the bids came in, in the fall, earlier in the fall? So are there any anticipation of higher materials costs next year that are going to counteract any savings again? I'm just trying to think of.
Well.
If anybody's thought about where the numbers, construction number. It seems to me the numbers are a risk of going higher, not lower, even if we do have a, a manager.
Yeah, um, I think based on the schedule, Bert, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're, we're talking about trying to get to a point of getting that guaranteed maximum price by early next year, like in the next three months.
Yeah, that's correct. We would, we would likely be able to lock in the price in the next eight to 12 weeks based off of the decision here to move forward with the contractor. We are also carrying roughly a six per, 6% contingency as a placeholder within the budget currently, of the numbers that were communicated. So we are carrying some contingencies to account for unforeseen and material escalation.
Joe. Go ahead, Joe. Joe, go ahead.
Right. So Michael, um, just, let's, let's take, let's take this back a couple steps. Just refresh my memory as far as what's been presented to counsel in a public forum. What, where did, how did we get here? I know we allocated funding through budget process. Is this, just again, got a lot of stuff going on. Is this the first time we've actually seen a concept presented of what the design may look like when, when, in this packet?
Yes.
All right. With the proposed building area, with the layout, the two stories, et cetera. Okay. Anecdotally, I recall, of course, this is off, off the record, having sidebar conversations with some staff that may no longer be working for the city, but my concept, what I had thought was going to be there was like a prefab corrugated steel U-shaped shed, that it was a plug-and-play dropped and that for the budgeted funds, we would be perfectly fine. I, so one ask is that, I know we don't micromanage, but what is, do we have a list of the minimum essential build functions and scope that we're asking to have? You know? What are we trying to achieve? And then is this nearly $4 million needed to achieve all of that?
Yes, we, uh, we went through a programming effort with the architect saying, okay, here's the amount of space we have now. Here's what we foresee as future need. here's the amount of space we have now. Here's what we foresee as future needs. And they came up with a square footage for the building based on that analysis. You know, there, there are two functions we're trying to serve there. One is you talk about the pre-engineered metal building. That would be kind of the warehouse area to store the materials, to store the equipment. But then the, the other part of it is the office space, which if some of this is to meet the need, we have park staff that's been housed at Vermac. At, at some point that won't be there anymore. And so they would move into this facility and then as well as the, the maintenance personnel. I mean, you know, can't, could the building be, I mean, we could always scale the facility to a lower budget, but it, would it meet the long-term needs of the city? And would we be coming back, you know, in five years and saying, well, we, we need more at this point? So we, we feel like it's a, but you know, reasonably scaled building is smaller than what's out there now. Uh, smaller than, you know, a lot of other facilities. But, but the site work alone that, that we got in the estimates was a million plus dollars. So you know, that eats up a lot of what was envisioned as a building cost before.
Yeah. From a finance perspective, the surplus capital project funds, what was the source of that? Is it SPOST or is it where, where, what is, so it's not SPOST?
I'm talking about like the old, a lot of it's old host money that's, it's not SPOST.
So it's not encumbered like SPOST funding prior SPOST one was. Okay. Yeah. All right. Well, I'm, I just, I think I just, I'm, I'm open having a greater conversation of how this gets funded. And when the funds were, would, we would have the funds, right? How would we have the funds and, and, and how would we do this? Yeah.
John.
I may, okay. What I would say was, this is a process we followed before, even when we did the renovations of this building, which was the construction manager at risk. So what, what would happen is, uh, this is just the first step in terms of bringing a construction manager onboard and look at the entire program. At that point, there'll be a price, a guaranteed maximum price, but that price will be negotiated too. They just don't give us a price. We say, take it or leave it. It can be negotiated. So that's what we're looking at there. That's the simple piece of it. Some of the stuff that the public works director has gone through tonight is a little bit more in the weeds in terms of what we're trying. The overall piece, he just wants to be upfront and tell y'all what the overall goal is and the current situation. But what's before y'all tonight as a discussion item is simply the construction manager at risk.
Okay, John.
Thank you, Michael. Is this a public facing building? Do you see the public going into this building or is it just for city staff?
Just for staff.
Okay, just because the offices and office visits and how it was working. Cause I wasn't sure if there was different construction requirements for public facing versus non-public. I'm not an expert in that. I just wondered if there was.
There are, and, and we've talked about that, but we don't envision there being a need for the public to come in and out of this facility.
Okay. We haven't seen plans. At one point, wasn't there thoughts of a separate exit or entrance to going to Peeler? And what's the status of that conversation?
There, there was discussion of that and we've talked about it. We haven't included into the plan right now. I mean, one, because of, you know, trying to limit cost. But the way this facility is laid out, it wouldn't preclude doing something like that in the future.
Except for maybe the creek.
Well, yeah, you, you kind of have to curve. Yeah.
Okay. I just wondered if that was part of the plan or going to be part of the discussion moving forward in the sense of getting these quotes. The next discussion that we've had as a council and chief, I think he's here. What about our storage building for our SWAT unit that was going to be possibly held at Brook Run? Is there any way that that discussion is part of this discussion? Or are we going to reserve a spot for that SWAT vehicle storage building?
Yeah. Chief, if you'll let me address that. Mayor, I, I can address that as well for council. And again, the, um, we did look at this, this location for the SWAT building as well. This, this part of the facility, the Brook Run area has too many creeks in it. There's a set of water features right next to it, springs and things that are right next to this current storage building. So whereas before, when you look at the map and I, I was guilty of looking at the map or the plot. And you could see that the trees, it looks like a spot you could put it, but you cannot. So we did look at that. The location, I'm glad it was mentioned tonight, that we're looking at for the SWAT building would be immediately behind the annex. Not at the top of the hill that was originally proposed, but immediately behind the annex on North Schallifer. And I have a plan I can share with y'all on that. I can send that out to y'all tomorrow via email. But it just shows it right there. So it would use some, it would use the initial driveway that comes in and then have the parking area right there behind and the building right behind, leaving the other portion of that property open for future use and/or a road that may potentially go in there at some point in time.
Right. So that'd be the, uh, going back to the annex, that'd be the storage.
Yes.
Storage lot for the SWAT. For the SWAT, basically you have a chained link fence that's for vehicle storage, whatever that's.
And that would, would be a metal style building there.
Okay. And then, um, on the site, Michael, you show the material storage units. Thanks, chief. Material storage. Do we have all material being stored on that plot now? I remember at some point, I might be going way back in time. But is that going to free up any other space in the park for material storage? Is there any other material going to be used or moved to this location versus other locations?
Yes, because we do have some storage down at the end of the road where Treetop is.
Right.
And we would probably still leave some of that back there that, things that we don't need very often, say like salt. You know, we might need it once a year that, so we don't have to go up and down that road a lot, but everything that we can move into this area, we would.
Okay. Again, when it comes to salt, I'm not an expert. I'm just making sure that's in the right place and not contaminating anything and all the rest. I just, one final question, and I looked over and I'm surprised nobody asked this question. Maybe it's just me. Does this building need to be energy star or is there anything in our, in our envir, our sustainability commission? Is there anything like that? We don't make, we haven't, how many buildings have we put up? We haven't put up many buildings. Is there any rules that say we need to do an energy star gold standard? Is there anything like that? And is that in these construction bids?
I'm glad you asked. The, our policy as part of our green governments requires it to be lead certified.
There you go.
Which, which will add some cost. So, but that's, we directed the design team that we have to meet this standard.
And that answers my questions. Thank you.
I, I just want to point out one other thing too, that we're talking about the plan. This is the plan right now. And talking to the construction manager, it likely will change some. I mean, some of what we've already been talking about with the value engineering is trying to figure out a way to get the building on one level and still have enough room on the site. So th- this is not the final plan. It's just what we're working off of right now.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. Yeah, actually most of my questions have been hit already. But the, the one thing I'll just throw a comment out there on, on the budget because little and easy talking about projects that aren't fully funded and, and moving forward with something. I, I'd like to just ask staff to look at when, when we were allocating funds from the Schallifer sale, we allocated roughly three and a half million to maintenance. A lot of that was for, in anticipation of additional maintenance costs from, from park facilities, from, from the bond, which of course we know that was not successful. So we were going to allocate some of that to other structure, you know, facilities, maintenance. But perhaps, I don't know if there's a way to perhaps get some of that dealt, you know, some of that missing funding from that money that was allocated to, to maintenance since, and it would be appropriate since this is a maintenance facility.
Yes. As, as we dial the number in and get the actual number, when we come back, we'll come back with a proposal or plan to fully fund it. I mean, we'll, we'll come back with a recommendation on how to pay for it.
Okay. All right. So I think we got off track a little bit because this was about the construction manager. But you gave us information and the budget makes me really uncomfortable. It's really a million dollars if you round up 900, well, kind of round up. No, it's nine, 911,000 if you went round way up. And and I'm concerned, as Rob mentioned, that we're just going to see, we're going to, we could potentially with some policy changes at the federal level, see really rapid increases in prices. And I, when you get a guaranteed price and then a month later, something like tariffs are introduced, potentially, maybe, possibly, heard they might be. What happens to that contractor and that project and the prices?
Yeah. I mean, that's a great question. Uh, we, we dealt with it in 2020. You, you're, you're right. It's a risk. Building anything ground up is a risk. The contract does have force majeure clauses. Legal counsel could probably speak to that better than I could. But you have to go into it eyes wide open. I think the swiftness of executing the design and the, um, the program and the contract helps mitigate that. But if there's something that would fall into that force majeure category, then we would have to revisit it. Once again, we've tried to carry appropriate contingencies for that. And if we win, then that money comes back to you.
Kind of going with that. So it's November 12th. This will, we'll see this, you know, in, in, in two weeks, 13 days. How like, I always like to know how quickly is it actually going to happen?
Yeah.
So because you know, we might be looking at this constraints, like realistically, when does it building commence and how long does something like this take to build?
Yeah. So based off of the feedback that we got from the market, it's probably somewhere between a seven and 10 month build. LDD Blue Line, who's been working with us closely on getting to that permit set of drawings has communicated that once we give them a thumbs up on a final program design that we think will maximize the budget, they need about a month to finish those drawings. Um, so now I'm kind of working backwards here, but it would be about a month left to finish the design. Once we say we like the program and we like the budget, it would likely be, we would then enter into an agreement and run a parallel path with procuring materials that may have a risk of escalation while we're under permit. The permit process could take anywhere from six to eight weeks. So you know, right now, what we would be projecting is a March, April start and then finishing 2025 is what, uh, is what we think we can do. Yep.
John, go ahead.
Yeah. One more thing, if I could, just reminded me of something. Michael, is there any in-ground storage of any fuel, old fuel tanks? Are we aware of how clean is the site and what do we need to do for remediation for in-ground fuel storage or anything in the past history?
Yeah, we're not aware of anything out there. We've done an asbestos survey.
That was my next question.
It didn't turn up anything, but we are carrying some money in the budget because with our experience at Brook Run, something always comes up, but, but we have not found any asbestos. We did subsurface exploration. We, we've, we've done all our due diligence there. Bert mentioned something I wanted to highlight again too, about concerns with cost is one advantage of the, of the CM at risk process is because we will have them onboard sooner than we typically would when you bid it out. We can't, they can't, we could approve partial. You know, once the, once we know what the project's going to be and, and we have the budget figured out, they could say, well, we really need to get the, you know, some materials because of the lead time or escalation, and they could go ahead and purchase those sooner in the process than you normally would in a, in a design bid build project.
All right. Well, thank you. It sounds like you've done your due diligence on the environmental aspects. I just hope that it all works out as planned. Thank you.
Every time someone asks a question, it makes me a little more nervous. So Lord knows, but we might anyway. When we get to this point, like we approved this contract and you come back and the price is not tenable or not doable, and there's no way to scale it in a meaningful way right now. And we have to wait to save up more money. Or is there any obligation with this contract? Like, is it okay to put it on hold or are we obligated to build starting in December, January? How does that work?
Yeah, the contract is going to mention the estimated cost and the program. But all, all we're really committed to at this point is the roughly $12,000 reconstruction fee.
Right.
And then, you know, they, they're, the contractor will be obligated to give us a guaranteed maximum price. And then we can, the city can choose to do whatever at that point.
All right.
And Mayor, this, this is not leading to a contract. This is basically discussing something that will need to happen in the future by vote of this council.
All right. Uh, is this okay with consent?
Yeah, actually my question was going to be, does it even need to be consent since it falls under the contracted amount that has to come before council?
I mean, can they start now if we're okay with it?
No, he cannot simply just do that without.
Okay. All right. That's fine consent. Thank you. Thank you for answering our questions. Rachel, are you still here?
Right in the home stretch, y'all. No pun intended. So this is our, our annual agreements for our seven athletics associations that use our, our parks, our field space of at Brook Run. Kate and I reviewed current language with agreements. We sent out requests for each group to say, you know, this is, this is coming. If you need something that needs to be changed, this is now the time. They've all reviewed their current agreements. And then staff also looked at current maintenance obligations with, with my staff, what operations is needing to do because of all this use. And then also community access to the fields. Um, so just a little bit of background, as we know, Dundee Senior Baseball has been here the longest. We officially partnered with them with a true agreement back in 2012, followed by Rush Union, which was then Chiefs Football Club. And then over the years, we've brought on the high school clubs, booster clubs, Wildcat Soccer. And then finally Atlanta MABL, that men's league last year. Um, on the school side, anything that's related to DHS, nothing was proposed by any of those school associations. We feel that the usage agreements that we have with the schools are, are pretty solid. So at this time, nothing is proposed for any changes going to next year. On the athletic side, there are a few proposed changes. It's, it's roughly the same language for each group. Obviously Rush Union Soccer, Atlanta MABL and Dundee Senior Baseball will be affected by these. Um, at the top of the list, increasing the fundraising tournament fees from $10 per hour to $30 per hour. This is specific to fundraising fees when the organization itself is not hosting. So if Rush Union partners with FIFA, this would, this would be in that case. So anything that's outside of the association's scope. Currently, the fees, when you add in the hourly rental rate, the organizations already pay us, plus the tournament fees, that total is $30. This would increase it then to 50. We would like to institute what we call an open weekend, which is a third weekend in June and July only. This is similar to what we do at Brook Run, Pronochol and Women Hall of our pavilion rentals. This was instituted years ago when we were just overrun with, with the use of Brook Run. So every third weekend, our pavilions are currently what we call a no rental weekend. So families can go, they can enjoy the park. We don't do special events. We don't do, we don't do rentals. It's just open. This would follow that same, the same schedule. And then just tightening up a little bit of language, seven day notice required for program credits. It's gotten a little fluid over the years. There is some language currently in the agreements about if, if groups can't play due to inclement weather, obviously we work with them on that. But what, what we're trying to do is tighten up staff time on, you know, weeks go by after a group has used the fields and it's, then it's kind of after the fact, oh, we need all this, all this credit, just kind of tightening up that language a little bit. The same thing would apply to Atlanta MABL, sorry. Um, the seven day notice, the fundraising does not apply to MABL. They don't do fundraising tournaments. And currently they are not programmed at all in June and July. So that's why that's not listed under their, their notes. And then on a maintenance standpoint, just tightening up the language, dugout trash cans and, and plaza trash. It's, over the years, sometimes our, our maintenance guys or tryscapes have had to go over after a big practice or game. There is a little bit of, of one of these kind of, you know, oh, we thought it meant this trash can. We think it means this trash can, just tightening up that, that maintenance chart within the packet. that maintenance um, chart within the packet. Um, and then Dunwoody Senior Baseball. So the the above mentioned, so the fundraising tournaments, the open weekend, the seven day notice and the dugout trash cans, um, again, would apply to Rush, to Atlanta MBL, Dunwoody Senior Baseball. Um, specifically to Dunwoody Senior Baseball, that open weekend would also include Monday evenings from 6 to 10 PM in June and July. Um, Monday evenings are probably um, very infrequently used. We feel like this is, this is a nice way to give more time to the community without impacting um, their weekly play um, too much. Um, and then the big thing for Dunwoody City baseball um, would be limiting the fundraising tournaments. So currently, um, they are allowed between May, June and July, a maximum 500 games annually. Um, this would come down to 400. This would naturally happen with that change in that open weekend. Um, but again, this would just allow for more community play. It would allow um, for us as park staff to rent out the fields as recoup some of the revenue, um, because the tournaments are great. They support our programs, but they do tear up the fields pretty significantly. Um, so this will just be a way to to recoup again some of that um, that overhead costs. Um, those, those are the big ones. Um, there were, thank you to Ken and your team. There was um, some revisions, um, just from previous agreements, just cleaning up the language. So thank you for your, for your work on that. Um, and I'd just like to open on that for for discussions on we, on going forward with these for next year.
Uh, anybody have questions or comments? Stacy?
Um, I actually um, talked to the Peachtree softball um, people. And I I would like somehow to us include a little bit tighter language. Um, the understanding was that Peachtree softball and Dunwoody Senior Baseball would share the um, labor of setting up softball and then transitioning to baseball. And in fact, that has not been the case. It has fallen solely on Peachtree softball, which I just don't really think is quite fair. It's a so if there's some language, and I was just kind of kicking around, um, each entity is responsible for their own setup. So Peachtree would have to set up their fields and and remove the mound, whereas Dunwoody Senior Baseball would have to remove the fences and replace and and you know, move the mound back in. And that way they each are responsible for one trip and it doesn't fall solely on Peachtree softball to do both.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Is there anything that you think should be in these things that isn't already in them, these agreements?
No, I I will look at um, the current language for um, for softball. Does it? It it probably could be tightened up and I'll work with with legal on that. Um, right now it's specific to getting the fencing and the bases ready for that program for safety reasons. Um, Dunwoody Senior Baseball has the same language, but there's nothing specific about when you transition between those two groups specifically. So we'll, we'll definitely look at that. Um, no, I I I understand um, that as as one of our partners, Dunwoody Senior Baseball, this will, excuse me, will impact them. Um, but at the same time, there is, um, you know, we we do have to think about the the community we have received. Um, a few questions over the years. It's it's not a lot. Um, just about questioning, you know, when, when can I go over here? Um, just making sure that that the hours that are available to the community are are hours that people can actually go and use them, not, you know, 7 to 9 AM or, you know,
Right.
things that are like that. So, um, like I said, this, these will come to you every year. Um, so we could always, you know, revisit next year, of course. Um, we do have that opportunity.
Mm-hmm. I think there's probably value in tracking the use on these off weekends, just to make sure we're communicating them. Um, okay. And then I have one last question. The high school associations, I presume that every year there's new parent leaders or has that not been the case yet?
Um, there is. Softball is, I I know is new. Um, I haven't heard of the others, but they they work directly um, with with Kate. She would, she's their their day to day contact.
So someone, we're confident someone reviewed them from the high schools?
Yes.
You got feedback from them? Okay.
Yep.
All right. Consent.
Consent except for Dunwoody Senior and Peachtree. And 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 I mean, I'm fine with that app, but I would like to, I guess, see the language and make sure that it's in there. But I'm fine with consent on the other five.
Do you want to split them at that point or just?
Yes, because we don't want to have to have that presentation.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Rachel, for staying until the end.
No, no, thank you.
All right, public comment? Thought somebody might stay. Um, and uh, city manager comments?
Mayor, we will need an executive session for both real estate and litigation.
Oh, that's new. Um, uh, council comments, anybody? Okay, I need a motion for
Move to adjourn to executive session for purposes of uh, real estate and litigation.
Second.
All in favor? Sorry.
Fine.
Check the elevator.